Oh, looks like it's good. All right, thank you so much. Thank you everybody and welcome. Call to order. The regular meeting of the Lawrence County Board of Commissioners. Today is Tuesday, May 13 of 2025. We appreciate everybody joining us this morning. Would ask if you have some type of an electronic communication device? If we please put it on silent or vibrate, we would certainly appreciate that courtesy. I do want to note that Commissioner Kennedy is not able to be with us today. He had a family member who passed away and funeral is this morning. So we do expect him back tomorrow. But two of us are here and that constitutes a forum. So we are able to begin. I do want to note that the meeting is being livestreamed and also recorded. And as we always do, we will begin the meeting with the pledge of allegiance and then ask you to remain standing for a moment of silence. Commissioner Sanada, did you leave in the pledge? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in this world with liberty, justice, and all.
Please remain standing, we'll have a brief moment of silence. Thank you, everybody. Vanessa, could you call the roll call?
Commissioner Sanada.
Here.
Commissioner Vogler.
Here, we do have a forum. If anybody needs, we have any agendas left there, agendas available if anybody needs one. And as we begin our meeting, I'll note that as we always do, we give two opportunities for public comment. One in just a few moments and then one before we adjourn. You're welcome to speak both times. If you'd only wish to speak once, that's also fine. And then if you're just here to listen, that's equally fine. If you do have a comment, we ask that it be related to county government matters and that if you could try to limit your time to about five minutes, we would appreciate that courtesy. Item two on the agenda, we always set aside time for roll call officer reports. We do have two of our elected officials with us today. I know they are both here on agenda items. However, I do want to give them the opportunity if they wish to have any comments over above what they're here for. Sheriff Polero, anything?
I have nothing, good morning, everyone.
Thank you, sir, appreciate your being here. Mr. Lamancusar, District Attorney?
Uh, no, no condition, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. That does take us to public comment. I, if you do have a comment or recognition, if you could state your name for the record and hear what you have to say. Any, any public comments at this time? Hearing none. Again, we'll do this before we adjourn. Last week, the board did not meet, so things have tended to pile up a little bit, which means, for example, we have five warrant registers to review. Warrant registers are the documents that are primed by the Controller's Office. They're also known as check reconciliation registers, listing of all the bills that have been paid. And, excuse me, they are dated April 29, April 30, and then May 1, May 6, and May 9. They're here if anybody wishes to look at them. And I'll give my colleague, Mr. Sanada, some time to look them over. Whenever you're ready, Chris, I could take a motion for you for us to accept these documents. Mr. Chairman, during the brief delay, I had an opportunity to go over all these documents. So I read them and I will make a motion, we accept them. Thank you, sir, and I will second your motion. Did you have any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you so much. We have a motion to second to accept these documents. Vanessa, could you call the roll call?
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Also, the minutes of the April 29 meeting are in the packet. Chris, you were not at that meeting. I'll respect your wishes. If you, if you're comfortable making a motion to adopt them, we can do that. If you prefer, we can, however you'd like to do it.
I pretty much read through it a little bit and I don't really have any issues with anything. And I will make the motion to accept these minutes.
Very good, I'll second your motion. You said you had no questions or concerns.
They were all very straightforward.
Yes, thank you. We'll take a roll call on this motion.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We have some written communications that we need to enter into the record. There are six of them, I'll try to go through them as quick as possible. Again, these documents are available if anybody wishes to see them. The first is correspondence that we received from the Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. It notes that a, an application has been filed with the PUC by the Buffalo and Pittsburgh Railroad for requesting approval to alter a public crossing by installing an underground fiber optic cable in a four-inch HDPE casing pipe at the Sixth Street Crossing in the borough of Elwood City. And this is signed by Andrew Reed, professional engineer. He works for the rail section, Bureau of Technical Utilities, Pennsylvania Department, or Pennsylvania Public Utility Commission. The second document comes to us from RAR Engineering, which is based here in Newcastle. Actually, there are two documents, both signed by Janine Malloy from RAR. They both pertain to the Newcastle Sanitation Authority's wastewater treatment plant on Montgomery Avenue in Newcastle. The first letter pertains to the replacement of three blowers for the wastewater treatment plant that operate the airation system and provide heat for the plant's main equipment building and tunnel system. The second letter, also for the sanitation authority, discusses the rebuilding of two gas engines for the power source of the airation system at the wastewater treatment plant. They're notifying us that they're going to apply to... Actually, the second letter is an application to the Pennsylvania Department of Community and Economic Development for a small water and sewer grant. And the same holds true for the first letter. They will go to DCED for that grant. They're simply giving us notification of this action that they intend to take. And the fourth letter is from Frank B. Taylor Engineering, just giving us notification of some work that is being done in Wilmington Township along Eden Dale Lane. These are for storm sewer improvements. Eden Dale Lane is a very small stretch of the public road that connects State Route 18 and State Route 158 in Wilmington Township. Looks as though the total cost of this project is $123,084. From Heidelberg Materials out of Conneleville, Pennsylvania, they are giving us a blast notification, notice that blasting will occur on the McQuiston Large Non Coal Surface Mine in the townships of North Beaver and Mahoning, located approximately one mile northeast of the borough of Bessemer, west of the intersection of Pondmaster Road and Small Sperry Road on the McCord Farm Trust and Heidelberg Materials Northeast properties. And it lists the blasting schedule. And then finally, Planning Office has notified us that the Wilmington area school district is applying for a, a grant to allow them to proceed with their project known as Cultivating a Sustainable Future. And the one document is a letter that has been sent to United States Senator Fetterman asking for his support for federal funding for this, for this proposal. And then the department, the county planning department has also noted that they have reviewed this proposal and that it does, is consistent with the county's comprehensive plan. And this will be taking place actually in Wilmington Township. The project description involves the installation of an aquaponics building and a greenhouse. Property also has tillable land where FFA students, as well as other students, will learn about farming, growing, drone, mine, and environmental issues. A number of weeks ago, some representatives of the Wilmington School District met with us to discuss this project. And it's immediately west of the borough line, of the new Wilmington Borough Line, maybe even west of that is where this property is located in Wilmington Township. These are the correspondence documents we received. Chris, do you have any concerns or questions?
No.
Would you care to make a motion for us to accept these?
Yes, I would. We accept these documents.
Thank you, sir, I will second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Commissioner reports and comments. Mr. Sanada, you get to go first today.
Well, I really wasn't around last weekend, or last weekend or last week or so. So I really don't have a whole lot of comments locally. I had an opportunity to go to Vatic on Thursday. I was, it was on my birthday, actually. And I had scheduled that many months ago and I had the opportunity to be there the day when the vote got announced. But I wasn't officially there when it happened. I had left around 3:30 and I think the announcement was at 6 o'clock. And I'd never seen so many people that were there that day. Just, it was really a, well, I didn't say it was a lifetime experience, but it just happened. It was not planned because this was one three months ago when I was going to be over there and it really was not what I wanted to see at Vatic and I never had that opportunity. So I was, I guess I was somewhat part of history, so that's pretty much all I have to say.
Well, welcome back and boy, your timing could have been better, couldn't it?
Yeah.
That's great, so thank you, Chris. Good to have you back. As I noted, we didn't meet last week as a board, but a few things have taken place over that timeframe. Commissioner Kennedy and I attended the conservation districts, Lawrence County and Byrefon, back on April 29, which was held out of the Department of Shenango Township. I believe school, three school districts participated in that event. And Mr. Kennedy and I also had the privilege of attending Law Day in courtroom number one on, on May 1st. And last week, a week, a week ago today, May, May 6, Comcast opened their office to the public at Union Plaza, where Walmart is located. And they had their grand opening ceremony. Real nice thing about that is if you're a Comcast customer, you had to deal with them in person. Lately, you've had to drive clear out of Chipewa Township. So this is very nice that they've opened their facility in Union Township. We also had a ceremony last Tuesday. The Masons, along with our organization Visit Lawrence County in conjunction with America 250, had a ceremony out on the front lawn. They planted a Liberty Tree in recognition of the upcoming 250th anniversary of founding of this country. And it was a very nice ceremony. They're planting these trees in every county in the Commonwealth. Later today, Commissioner Sanada and I will be attending yet another grand opening out in Union Township. We've been doing that with some frequency lately. There's a lot going on out there. At 3 o'clock today, Jersey Mike's Subs, they are opening right down the, right down from where Comcast has opened. So they're having their grand opening. The Planning Commission will hold their regular monthly meeting tomorrow at the Wilmington Township Building on Wilson Mill Road. It's open to the, open to the public. And then on, on Thursday, the three of us plan to drive to the Mercer County Courthouse in conjunction with our colleagues there. We will be honoring Greg Dobin from the Simple Jaff partnership, who just received a state award for his work. And we're going to be congratulating him. And then finally, no, not quite finally. Next Monday, at 10 o'clock, the Board of Elections will convene, as we always do, the day before the election. Primarily, we get a report from Mr. Germani as far as how everything is shaping up for the election. And then, of course, next Tuesday is Election Day. The courthouse will be open, the commissioners do not meet on Election Day, but we'll, we'll be here. We have our election board hats on. But I want to, I want to throw it back to Chris for just a second because I believe you and Mr. Kennedy are going over to Armstrong County on Friday. If you wish, we...
I'm glad I, I wasn't thinking about that, mediascy about it. Yeah, myself and Commissioner Kennedy. We, all three of us serve on the SPC Board in Pittsburgh. And Mr. Kennedy's our executive board member. And we were all invited over to a planning session, which is actually to be held in Armstrong County. This happens, it's probably the first time in the last two years. Chairman, often do they usually have that, is that a real possibility?
You're actually, maybe you've been on SPC before.
This is my first time, so we're updating the transportation improvement plan right now. So this is the opportunity for them to update all the commission members, planning directors, and anybody else that has an interest to go, that's invited by commission members, so. But this is the first time, I've in a long time.
Are you, are you...
I'm not able to go, I'm in state college for another board meeting, so.
Well, my two colleagues will be here, so we'll be well represented.
That's absolutely...
Yeah, I think it's... No, that's fine, appreciate your information, Amy, because, I mean, if that's the first time, that's incredible. We're not actually in Pittsburgh. We usually go to the, their office right downtown Pittsburgh. We meet every other month. And Commissioner Kennedy does two meetings. I do the general meeting with him and he has the executive board meeting, which is usually an hour before our meeting. And so all three of us, I feel, and serve on that board. And I think it's important that I get to chair the Northwest Board that I took over for Chairman Vogler last July. So Lawrence County's representing pretty much two different regions. We're, we're unique because we're on that border. And when I was in legislature, it was a similar situation. We were the Northwest Caucus and the Southwest, and it was Lawrence and a few other counties fell in that same, same situation. There's, there's some positive you get out of that because we actually have good relationships with both of them. And I know Amy does a good job with the SPC, with us there. And you, you chaired that for many years up in Northwest, so your connections are well respected up there. So I just wanted to bring that up. And I think we're, you know, we're prepared to do what we can with the input of Amy and our people here. And I just, I'm happy we're able to do that. Pat Fabian, that's a nice job, he's the commissioner from Armstrong County. He's the chair of that. So we'll be there pretty much all day. You're going to hold the fort up there.
I'll try. All right, thanks. But thank you for representing us, Chris.
Sure.
Appreciate it. We move on to new business. And the first item on the agenda involves, actually, the first couple of items involve our planning office. Amy Kenny is our planning director, welcome. I hope you're doing well.
I am.
That's great. Thank you. What number will this first one be, Vanessa?
93.
93, thank you. The first proposal ties in with the Greenways. Looks like we're buying for a Greenways grant, is that correct?
Yes, it's a CFA, Community Finance Agency, the Greenways Trail Recreation Program, GTRP. So this is for additional funding to help with the Savage Beto Rehabilitation Phase Two. If you recall, we got funding for the local share count for, we asked for, the total project is over $700,000. We only backed $100,000 through LSA. We did apply to DCR for funding to match $700,000. We are, we did apply to LSA again. And so we're now applying here to help cut, you know, each, the costs down and get some more money to actually do the entire trail. So this would be for $250,000. We're working with board of Lawrence and our county engineer. The operator's been very helpful. The requirement is a 15% match, which will come from the county planning departments. We have some money in our grants and programs that we can use for this. And it's only, it's only contingent, obviously, upon the award of the grant. So this here would just be approving, us applying and approving the 15% match.
Thank you. We're proud of that trail that encompasses both parts of Union Township and Mahoning Township and leads into the state of Ohio. And it gets a great deal of use.
Yeah, that's...
And it actually attracts people from outside of the county who might particularly like to bicycle. I've met people from Pittsburgh who come up here and they not only take advantage of the trail, but they spend their money here. They can eat here and go shopping here, so it's been very, very helpful. Mr. Sanada, questions for Amy?
No, I just, I think we're on the right path, Amy. I know we've had this discussion and I said a few times, I bought my bike last year. It's the first bike I've had since high school. And I think that the trail is just beautiful and you just need help in Ohio, that end of it. But if people have to use it, they will know the work and effort that's been put on by Pennsylvania and our side. I think the county's done a very good job of trying to maintain it. I know that you keep an eye out on it, a few others as well, to make sure it's as safe as it can be. And I know Judge Wado, he kept an eye on it as well. So I think it's important because recreation is critical. That's a very critical part of tourism industry. And I have the, I'm going to sit on the tourist promotion board, jumping there tomorrow for a meeting. And it, that's an act, a very important aspect of tourism. Like Chairman Vogler said, people come from all over for the trail and usually when they come, they are hungry and they want to stop. And then you stop in local restaurants. So that's, that's a good thing. So hopefully, we can be successful. I know that we try very hard at it, a whole amount, you know, how the process works. And sometimes you have to piece through it. So we might just eventually, we'll have it all done, like, you know, best chance we can. So hopefully, we're successful with this.
With that all being said, as positive as that was, I'm assuming you're going to make a motion.
I'm going to make a motion that we can do this, so.
Okay. It shocked me if you'd...
I'll note it, not the right motion.
Chris, I will second that motion. There are no other concerns. Amy, everything covered on that one?
Yes, thank you very much.
Maybe we have a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Proposed Resolution 94. Our planning office works very closely on this matter involving liquid fuel dollars. Commonwealth of Pennsylvania collects through the gas tax liquid fuel dollars that they then turn over to the 67 counties. We receive a couple different levels of funding. Couple of them are specifically for the bridges that we own, of which there are 27 that we're responsible for taking care of. As we've said many times, the county does not own any roads or streets or highways. Those are all either PNDOT or a local municipality. So what we're able to do each year is take the surplus funds that we have, the non-bridge funds that we have. And we correspond with the 27 municipalities, both in written mail and email. They were given the opportunity to submit an application for liquid fuel dollars. Of the 27 municipalities, 17 responded. And we had, based on review of your office with the Controller's Office, Vanessa plays an important role in this. We determined that this year we had $400,000 to distribute to the municipalities. So our decision, as it was last year, was to simply take the 400,000 divided by 17 applicants and the dollar amount per municipality will be $23,500. I'll go very quickly through this to tell you what they plan to do. The borough of Bessemer, their money will be used for helping to pave Main Street. The city of Newcastle will utilize these funds for the paving of South Mill Street from Division Street to Long Avenue. The borough of Elwood City will be working on some rehabilitation of Bridge Street. Mahoning Township will use theirs for paving of Evergreen, Coffee Run, and Main Streets. Nashanick Township plans to pave Glen Road. New Beaver Borough will be paving Wampum Mount Air Road, a part of it. The borough of New Wilmington will be paying, I think a lot of these are alleys. Haw, Cherry, Jackson, Chestnut, Landen, Church, and Wood. Many of those are smaller alleys in the borough of New Wilmington. North Beaver Township plans to pave Moravia Road, New Road, and Mount Air Road. Plain Grove Township will pave Brent, Mason, Banani, Davis, and Burns Roads. Pulaski Township will be tar and chipping Evergreen, Nashua, Rayner, Pine Glen, Layton, and Woodland. Shenango Township was a little more generic. They do plan to resurface various roads and streets in the township. Slippery Rock Township, and this is a permitted expense, they plan to purchase road and street signs for their township. Union Township plans to pave Scotland Lane. The borough of Wampum will be paving Clyde Street, Water Street, Orchard Street, and Darlington Road. Washington Township will be doing storm drainage work on Shana Road. Wayne Township will be paving Dutch Ridge Road. And Wilmington Township will be tar and chipping the Fayette, New Wilmington Road and the Fayette-Nashanick Falls Road. So that's how we formulated this. Again, 17 of the 27 municipalities applied. Amy, do you have other things to add on this?
No, you covered everything. We, like you said, we identified all 27 municipalities. They all had a deadline to submit by. 17 here all submitted in a timely manner. We did not have any applicants come in after the date either, so this is the 17 that we had. They all met all the requirements. Vanessa and I reviewed them and we added it to the picture.
Great, well, we thank you for that. Mr. Sanada?
No, I think that it's a fair way of doing it. And if they can help and we were fortunate to get this year, we didn't need money. And as we said last year, Amy, that's the money we have. We want to try to go and give it back to all the municipalities who are really working. That's what we're doing.
And, and I'm glad you pointed, pointed out, triggered something. Keep in mind that each municipality gets their own allocation from the Commonwealth of Liquid Fuel Dollars. So the sources are actually twice. They get money directly to them, each borough and township, the city of Newcastle, as well as what we're able to distribute. Thanks, Chris. Chris, would you care to make a motion for Resolution 94?
Sure, I would be supportive of Resolution 94.
So much, I will second. And if there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The final thing from planning, I believe, is Resolution 95. This involves the facade program in the borough of Elwood City. We received a grant from the Department of Community and Economic Development's Keystone Communities Program. We set up a, a, a structure with the borough of Elwood City to allow applicants in the borough to apply for up to $5,000 for facade improvement, which I believe they have to match.
Yes, dollar for dollar.
Thank you. And this particular application comes from the borough of Elwood City itself. They intend to replace windows at their borough building on Lawrence Avenue. Amy, what, what more do you have to add on this?
No, just they're, they, they're, they're an eligible applicant. The, the contract with DCED is the county. This is the county's grant, but it focuses that area in Elwood City Borough. Program is to end this year, but we got an extension because we are having issues with getting businesses to apply. It's slowly, this is the first one we've had, probably six months. So this is for them to do windows right on the, in the borough building where faces Lawrence Avenue. Dollar for dollar, they're matching it. It's a little over $10,000, but we will reimburse them $5,000 when it's all said and done, so.
And then, help me, because my feeble memory's working again. In terms, like, your office works with them in terms of administrative side, but is this county or redevelopment occurring?
This is the county.
This is the county?
This is the county, yes. Yep, the contract is with DCED and the county of Lawrence.
Thank you for reminding me of that. Mr. Sanada, questions?
No, sounds like...
Would you care to make a motion for Resolution 95?
I would make a motion for Resolution 95.
I will second. And if there are no other questions, we can take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanada?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you so much. Amy, anything else for us?
No, thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you so much. And again, your planning commission meets tomorrow at noon up in Wilmington Township.
Yep, yep.
Great.
All right.
Thanks for all your hard work.
CMR, thank you.
Take care, Amy. Resolution 96 ties in with District Judge Russo's office. Oh, we have a representative. Good morning, how are you?
Good morning.
Please have a seat. Doing great, thank you. Could you enter your name for the record?
Shaw Cola.
Thank you, Shaw. Good to have you here. I think, I think it's your first time here.
It is.
Oh, my goodness. Please don't be nervous. You're amongst friends, yes. And we're so glad you came down to, to visit with us.
Thank you.
This resolution involves the ongoing equipment maintenance for your credit card machine at Judge Russo's office out in Nashanick Township. And this is a, a, a contract, I believe, we have with First Data Corporation. at Judge Russo's office out in, uh, Nashanick Township. And, uh, uh, this is a, a, a contract, I believe we have, with First Data Corporation, uh, for this, uh, software, if I'm reading this correctly, but maybe I'd better just talk and let you give us all the details.
It actually is going to be a purchase of a new credit card machine. Our last one was purchased, I believe, in two thousand eighteen. Um, there are no further updates available for it and it just, just kept working.
Sweet.
So we are in, um, trying to get this new one that's a Clover Mini stationary machine that we will use for our credit payments.
And I would assume it probably gets a lot of use.
We do. About eighty, ninety percent of our payments, with a lot of, you know, truck drivers, they get fined, they just call in and, and do the payment under the phone, so.
That's good to know.
Convenient.
Well, it sounds to me like we'd better approve this.
I think we should too.
Uh, but let me see if Mr. Sanato has questions.
No, I think you were very thorough and, uh, I appreciate your information. Does any of you give it a, uh, a two point?
Yeah, sometimes it happens with these disequipments is that it reaches a point where you can't get updates or anything. It has to be replaced and, uh, and we have to do it. So I move we accept this.
Old things wear out. I'm living proof of that. Uh, I will second your motion. Uh, if there are no other concerns, we'll take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
We, uh, you're very welcome to stay, but if, if Judge Russo needs you, would you prompt us?
Yes.
Then feel free to, to head out. We really appreciate you being here today.
I just have one thing. I will have to have that email. You and I've been talking with Vanessa.
Yeah.
They'll have to do, they would like you to, um, be signed. They, uh.
We can do that.
Okay.
Yep.
I will call her when I get back to have that done, if we could take care of that.
And I have your purchase order, so I'll have them sign it and I'll, I'll give it to you.
Okay, thanks, yeah.
You're, you're here today, tomorrow and Thursday? Okay, but you're not here Friday?
Correct.
Okay, but, but please, uh, work with the boss and do all we can to help you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thanks for joining us. Let's give our best to the judge.
Absolutely. I will. Thank you.
Resolution, uh, ninety-seven. Amy DeMuccio's with us. Good morning, Amy.
Good morning.
Good to see you. Sorry we've kept you all waiting. Uh, but, you know, obviously we didn't meet last week, so that's why we have a little bit more on the agenda. This is Resolution ninety-seven. Incidentally, Amy DeMuccio is our court administrator. Uh, this is, uh, involves a maintenance agreement with S B M Electronics, uh, to provide, uh, recording device, uh, maintenance services that it costs not to exceed six thousand one hundred and seventy-five dollars for a one-year period. But please, if you have more details, we would welcome them.
Yes, this is covering our recorded devices in all five of our courtrooms. And they're used on a daily basis. All court proceedings are recorded. And it's vital that we have this agreement. When we call S B M, they show up.
Yeah.
Or they do it over the phone. They're, they're very good. And this is just a renewal of an ongoing agreement with them.
And I see they're based in Pittsburgh. At least that's probably their headquarters. So, if, if you get there here in about an hour or so, if you need them?
Yes, and oftentimes they can help us over the phone.
All that.
If we contact them, they're able to walk us through easy fixes.
Out of my own ignorance, I, I should know this and I don't. And, and it's interesting because we just had Judge Russo's, uh, staff person here. Uh, are the district judge, uh, uh, hearings, are they also recorded? And with that, if they are, is that separate from what you folks do?
I don't think they are recorded, but it is on a separate system. This is, I believe, simply for our recording systems.
Understood. In our courtrooms here in this, in this, in this complex?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you for that. Uh, questions, Mr. Sanato?
No, Amy, as per as usual.
Are you willing to make a motion for her to move forward on this?
I'd make that motion.
I will gladly second it. If there are no other concerns, we can, uh, take a roll call, please.
Commissioner Sanato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Amy, uh, it's always nice to have you here. I assume that's the only matter of business we have today.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hope you have a great day. Take care. The, uh, next, uh, proposal is number ninety-eight and, uh, this involves the county detectives who follow with the jurisdiction of our district attorney. And Mr. Lamancusa is with us today and it's, uh, certainly a pleasure to see you.
Good morning.
Hope you're well.
And, well, I apologize for not being a suit for this maybe, but I just started before this morning, so, and, uh, county detectives that are here for a further contract that we're working hard this morning.
Well, and, uh, I can just kind of imagine what you've done and hopefully it's been a good morning for you.
So far, so good. That's what I got.
As long as everybody stays safe.
Always safe.
Good. Including you. Thank you. Well, we have, uh, a lease agreement with, uh, and, and, and last week or two weeks ago, I struggled with this. How do we pronounce this? Delage Landen?
I don't, uh, I typically say direct image.
That's right. They changed it. Yeah, yeah.
But, uh, yeah, I, I, uh, where the correct pronunciation is Delage Landen.
Delage Landen. Okay, this is the lease agreement for the, uh, uh, copier machines in the, uh, county detective's office. And this would be a sixty-month lease according to the resolution.
Yes, sir.
If you'd like for us to consider. Is anything you need to add?
It's, uh, it's the big copy machine. That's the most I can say. It has the ability to stand and promote access, so it's, no matter where the, uh, theft on the building, they can access it in a central location. So it's been functional and, uh, we really have any problems.
Great. Good to hear. Mr. Sanato, questions for the district attorney? As usual, he's pretty thorough as well, so. Pursue all your efforts for the county. Would you wish to make a motion for this resolution?
I would make that motion and I'll second it. Um, I, I will note on, on a side note, you know, in light of what we've been doing all morning, we, we could have put you first this morning.
Oh, no, it's okay. It, it, because it actually works out better than.
Does it? Okay.
Yeah. The, the early, early meetings were usually a little bit less, I'd say. It's better as time goes on. Now it's just processing the evidence.
Understood. I just feel bad. We held you up for forty minutes.
Not at all. It was actually just nice to get away. So, thank you.
But in the future, if you ever need, we have that flexibility.
I, I appreciate that. And the question that you asked, the court administrator, all magistrate hearings are recorded? I say, um, by, uh, the right central court, they're recorded. Even some magistrate offices, and that they can be transcribed.
Thank you for, uh, clarifying that. And, uh, Linda Avery, I believe, was here and, uh, she, she hadn't, uh, left, she could have answered that, I would assume. But thank you for answering.
Sure.
Um, I, I apologize. Did, did Chris move for this yet?
Yes.
Yes.
He did. So between I seconded it?
Which I will.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. If there are no other, uh, questions or concerns, uh, this is Resolution ninety-nine. Maybe we have a roll call, please.
I'm sorry, this is ninety-eight.
No, I think it's ninety-nine. Oh, no, no, you're right. You're right. I, we have a second Delage Landen.
Yes, we have three actually.
So she is correct. This is ninety-eight. I put it in the wrong time.
That's okay.
So thank you, as always, for keeping me on a straight and narrow. Resolution ninety-eight's been moved and seconded. Now may we have a roll call, sir?
Commissioner Sanato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Josh, thank you so much.
I just have one quick question. It's certainly, if, uh, if there's any way in the future, um, that the DA's office could be notified when, uh, blasting occurs within our county. I just saw this, this notice and I really appreciate it being able to see this because whenever blasting does occur in the large explosions in Lawrence County, we always get flooded with calls and we're not always sure, um, what's going on. So that's fantastic. I did not realize that they provided notice to the county.
Yes.
So it's certainly coming upon me to, to educate myself about that, but.
Vanessa, could, could, for the future?
Yeah, I'll, I'll add you to the email.
That would be fantastic.
And, and if you could also mention it to, uh, Ryan, in case you're maybe when you're off.
Sure.
Um, I, I'll give you the one we have.
I don't, I don't need it just so long as I know if they have a timeframe, honestly, because, like I said, it comes in through Facebook and the phone, starts ringing, it's an explosion.
Certainly. But I, I'd really feel more comfortable if you had it.
Yes, sir.
There we go. There you are.
Thank you.
And, and we will. We'll add you to the list.
Yeah, this is fantastic. I really appreciate it.
Our pleasure, Josh.
It's awesome, Josh. Would you like on, I agree with Chairman, I know that a lot of times when the military does their firearms, do they notify you as well?
They don't. Um, they don't notify us. I'm not sure if they notify, uh, the cert team. I'm not sure on that. Yeah.
I thought they had to notify the local.
I don't know if they do the municipalities.
Maybe, but I remember at the time, they were telling us that they had.
It could be that they're not, like, Chief Kumbolo.
They had to call. Yeah, I.
Right.
Cause I've done a lot with the honor guard stuff, but they would do like the firing squads. They were always saying, you know, he had to call. I think we may be right. The local municipal police.
Yeah, the, uh, when federal agencies work in Lawrence County, the, uh, including state police, they're in our jurisdiction, we do receive those.
Yeah, I just was thinking, well, the same situation, a good occurrence.
Fire.
You hear, they do the honor guard, next thing you know, your office, and you, you as well, Sheriff, you know, it's just curious, not that. I think, cause I know they were always telling me, hey, what happened? They always had to call the local police just to alert them, which it makes us a good idea, actually.
It's a great idea because, you know, obviously when citizens here are fired, actually multiple rounds be fired, that just calls for that.
Absolutely. Well, thank you.
If I'm always shooting out of my mouth, do I need to notify you of that?
No, you don't, obviously. I haven't heard anything unreasonable from you.
Always, always good to have you here.
Thank you, sir.
Please, please stay safe.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. And, uh, thanks, but again, Vanessa, for keeping us, uh, in line. This is Resolution ninety-nine and this involves Sheriff Polero's office. Sheriff, uh, again, thank you for your patience this morning.
Good morning.
Appreciate your, uh, sticking around and, uh, glad to have you. And, uh, this is very similar to what Mr. Lamancusa just brought. It's for a sixty-month lease agreement, uh, for copiers in your office. And it's Delage Landen, but also known as direct image, right?
It's very crucial in our department. I mean, we get, of course, from the courts, all the warrants come down and we get the facts into the Niall One Center. So our copy gets a lot of use.
Yeah.
We get a lot of copies and a lot of facts as in from other departments. We like to pick up inmates from other counties, they fax information to us. So it's very crucial.
And, and I would assume, Sheriff, that that's not just from, uh, eight to four. I bet when you come in in the morning, just.
All the hours.
Yeah.
And sometimes I get calls on the, over the weekends or late hours, I've gone to check on it.
Right, understood.
Well, yeah, we definitely, yeah, we did.
Chris, questions for the sheriff?
I think it makes a lot of sense. I know that your office is always busy, Sheriff, and we appreciate your efforts.
Yeah, thank you. Chris, would you care to move for Resolution ninety-nine?
Yeah, I make a motion except Resolution ninety-nine.
I will provide the second, and if there are no other concerns, we can take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Sheriff, uh, again, thanks for your patience this morning.
No problem.
You, you take care, sir. You stay safe also. Number one hundred is, uh, similar. Uh, we're on a roll here, Lisa. Yeah, page number one hundred. Lisa Hadad is with our juvenile probation office and it's always nice to have you with us. Uh, and, and again, just, I'm gonna sound like a stuck record, but this is a sixty-month lease agreement with, uh, Delage Landen for copiers for the juvenile probation office. And I'm sure they get a workout just like the other offices do.
We just have one single copier in our office and it does get, it's centrally located and it's lots of work from all of us, so. We were just not aware that we needed to have this. Uh, we actually got the copier as of August last year.
I see.
So we're just catching up to the times here.
Okay. And, and, uh, have you had situations arise where maybe malfunctions and you gotta get a repair man?
They are very good. Um, as soon as we call, they're mostly here the same day.
That's good.
That's been actually wonderful and not, not holding us up at all.
And I would assume if you're in, if you're in a situation like that, you have to have some copies made, your, your neighbors will help you out, is that right?
Absolutely.
Okay, good.
Appreciate that.
Uh, Chris, questions for, uh, Lisa?
No, thank you, Lisa. Thanks for joining us. Uh, we appreciate you spending the time there.
I know.
Sometimes the, the meetings can be somewhat boring, but it's actually educational as well and, uh, we appreciate your job. What you guys do over at your office.
Thank you.
Well, that being said, Chris, would you care to move for Resolution?
I would make this motion. Well, I will have Dan here to help me out.
You're making all the motions.
I'll make them all. Yes, I make that motion.
I'll be happy to second it. Take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Lisa, good to see you.
Much appreciated. Thank you.
You can take care. Have a good, good rest of the day.
You too.
We have four transfer requests. Chris, do you mind if I just go through them? Uh, you stop me if you have any questions. Okay, thank you. Jail is requesting a five thousand dollar transfer. I'm assuming Joe, to your knowledge, is it from their contingency?
It is. It's from their contingency and, and the reason for it, Commissioner, it, it says on there that the gas bill was out.
Yeah.
We had two of our three boilers go a few months ago and that fuel went out. They're gas operated boilers and we had leaks, so.
I see.
Once we get caught up here, they should be fine.
Understood. So it's been addressed or is it in the process of being addressed? Very good. Thank you for that explanation. The, uh, IT department, Information Technology Department is asking for a five thousand dollar transfer from their maintenance and repair line item into that of, uh, materials and supplies. And that's to cover, uh, Amazon purchases, uh, which Controller's Office is noting should come out of the materials and supplies line item. The Vogler's office is requesting a transfer of two hundred and fifty-two dollars and twenty-four cents from contracted services into equipment lease and rental specifically to pay Pitney Bowes invoices. And then finally, uh, the, uh, uh, Vogler's office is asking for a twenty-five thousand dollar transfer from their line item of contracted services into materials and supplies. This is to help them with, uh, the upcoming, uh, twenty-twenty-five primary election, which occurs next week. Chris, do you have any questions or concerns? I'll, I'll say it straightforward. And would you wish to make a motion for us to approve the transfers?
I would be second all the transfers.
Okay, thank you, sir. I will second and we'll take a roll call.
Commissioner Sanato?
Yes.
Commissioner Vogler?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks, Vanessa.
You're welcome.
As we noted, um, next Tuesday's election day, uh, traditionally this board does not meet on election day as the Board of Commissioners. So the next regular meeting of this board will be two weeks from today, May twenty-seven at ten AM. Uh, as we noted earlier, the, uh, County Planning Commission will meet tomorrow, May fourteen at twelve noon at the Wilmington Township Building on Wilsonville Road in Wilmington Township. Uh, next, next, uh, Monday at ten AM, we will convene as the Board of Elections. And, uh, for, for two purposes. One is to receive a, a final update from Mr. Germani as far as how things are, uh, shaping up for Tuesday's election. And then traditionally, we, uh, do not adjourn that meeting. We recess that meeting to the hall of the chair. Reason for that is if some emergency should arise, uh, we're permitted then to come back into session, uh, to address any emergency situations and, and, uh, not have to do the, uh, uh, twenty-four hour, uh, legal notice. And the solicitor is, both the current solicitor and past solicitors have said that's an appropriate approach. I would assume, uh, this is being replicated in every county in the Commonwealth. Finally, the courthouse will be closed on Monday, May twenty-sixth in observance of, uh, Memorial Day. And it just dawned on me that, uh, we will not meet as a commissioner board until after Memorial Day. So I should note, um, I, I know this. I know that we're aware of some of the community events that will honor our, our deceased veterans. Uh, New Bedford, Alpulaski Township, uh, the Saturday before Memorial Day has a parade that starts at ten thirty. Uh, is it ten thirty or ten? I'm not sure. Maybe it's ten. But this, and then they have a ceremony at eleven.
Right, the ceremony's at eleven.
And both, both, both Mr. Sanato and I are gonna go to that one. And then at the same time, at eleven o'clock, there's a ceremony in downtown Newcastle. Mr. Kennedy will be attending that on behalf of the Commissioners. Then on, uh, Memorial Day itself, May twenty-sixth, in the Borough of Elwood City, they have their annual Memorial Day parade and ceremony. And tentatively, I think we're all gonna try to get to that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna be at Mahoney Town.
Oh, that's, I'm forgetting that. You've got Mahoney Town.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be doing that at ten. I actually got my phone call yesterday for this brought about there.
Oh, good. Good.
I'm gonna do it at ten and hopefully, uh, make it down to Elwood City after.
You did that last year, I think, and it worked out.
It worked.
Yeah. So hopefully it'll, it'll work this year. Now, I know in the past, and I, I don't mean to overlook anyone, and I'm probably going to, but, but not on purpose, but I think Eden Valley may have a small event and, um, I think some years Bessemer.
I was gonna suggest, is Bessemer, North Beaver, uh, you know, it all falls at the same time. I think it's all at ten AM on Memorial Day.
Yeah. Right.
And it all can be from Mahoney Town.
Yep.
Bessemer and the North Beaver one.
And, and we might be forgetting some. And and we might be forgetting some, we apologize if we are. I have a hunch, the Newcastle paper usually publishes all of the events, but these are the ones where we are. Uh thanks Chris. This takes us to um public comment, which we have two members in the public, and we'll open the floor if you folks have anything. Mrs. Burcheck.
Um you said that when you have your voter uh meeting on the Monday before election day, that you do not adjourn in case you decide you could address emergencies, have you ever had to address an emergency?
I've gotta stop and think if we've had to do that. I don't recall on election day itself. I know we've had to I know we've had to undertake state mandated recounts. And I think that fell in that timeframe when the board was still uh in recess, so to speak. We hadn't adjourned, so we still were able to do things. So I I would argue that that, yeah, when we had to do those recounts, that kind of fell under that jurisdiction, so to speak. But do you remember, uh you've been here a long time, do you remember the Board of Elections having to convene either on election day or maybe the day after?
I don't, no, I don't think we ever had that too.
But you know what, um um when we have Mr. Germaine here next Monday, we'll ask him if he remembers. But it's 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 one of those things that we just need to play it safe in the event something would occur, so. Not on wood if it won't, but thank you for, and by the way, thank you both, I know you serve on election boards and we we appreciate your service. Other?
Thank you for the raise.
Oh, you're very welcome, but thank you. Any other concerns or comments?
I just, I had another question, I was just curious to know if uh Mr. Sanado knows how to speak or understands Italian.
Uh unfortunately, the only words I know, I think, were some bad words, my grammar is minus used. I did not speak English, I tried to understand maybe a little bit, you know, like Chow and this type of things, but unfortunately I never took it up. I, you know, we were, if I was that generation, I guess, you know, they didn't teach that in school. We had a French up in Union. But no, I I wouldn't be something to try to learn, I I gotta, I learned something on this trip that that they don't speak English in these places. So you gotta learn something, and uh you try to use your hands a lot because uh there's a couple situations where it's like, how will we get into the ship, okay, with the terminal, we had an issue with a driver, a cab driver. And they spoke no English, but I'm told there's an app on the phone that can do translation. And I'm gonna get that, but I learned a lesson, it's like it's very frustrating when you try to communicate with someone and they're not understanding what you're telling them.
I see, that's what I was thinking, you know, but um I I would hate to go to a foreign country, and I've never been to one except Canada.
Yeah.
And they speak English, so I'm thinking it would be hard to get around it.
Whatever it is, Mrs. Burcheck, bigger cities, they speak English. I mean, there there's some of the people you'll deal with, because because of tourism, they got, they have guides who take you, there's always that option, they they have people that speak English. But if you go to smaller towns or, you know, things like that, they don't. And I was used to being pretty much in more of the bigger places, but when you get involved and you're maybe taking one side of town and it's like, wait, there's no one here talking English. And that included law enforcement, I mean, this is, it's a different, it's a different feeling, but if you go like to the big resort type places, there's always some people there for English because that's their business, okay, but when you leave that, you're putting yourself, you know, and I think the answer has to be, I'm told there's an app on the phone that you could say something and it will come up in a language that you could say, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I used to be fairly good at Pig Latin, but that's not all I was good for. Um Chris, do you have any closing uh comment?
No.
Thank you. I don't either, but Vanessa or Joe, anything that we missed?
No, sir.
Well, we appreciate everybody joining us and uh we urge everybody to vote next Tuesday. Hope we have a good turnout because we're electing judges, that's very important. If Debbie Wachter is watching, Debbie, I have today's packet, I have the packet from our recent retirement board meeting, and I have the packet from our recent Board of Elections meeting, they'll be upstairs if you'd like to pick them up. There being no other business to be brought before the board, could could I have an adjournment?
I'll make the motion adjourn.
Thank you, sir, I will second, all in favor, please say aye, aye oppose, the same side, motion carried, we are adjourned, thank you. Joe, you will. Thanks, good to see you folks.
Stand up first.
Thanks Vanessa. I'll put these.
Try.
Right on time.
Yeah, you can, you always go to lunch at this time?